Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parsons? Mayor Lumber.
Second.
Second to approve agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
How about the minutes, October 17th and October 21st?
Seven.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of October 17th and the three minutes of October 21st.
How about that? Kevin Smith representing the Brandon Water Conservation Committee. Trudy Papka and I are here this evening just to give you an update on some of our accomplishments over the past year and looking forward to some things we would like to do in 2020 with the council's approval. So, first slide please. I was looking back as I was preparing the presentation to when the, at the time, the Water Conservation Subcommittee was formed and we first met in, I think it was February of 2018, almost two years ago. And the first couple of meetings as a Subcommittee, we spent time talking about what we thought was most important and the direction that we thought we could make improvements. So we had these three recommendations. Recommendation number one, create a staged lawn watering program. Recommendation number two, create courtesy notices and administrative citations for lawn watering enforcement. And recommendation number three, which was to create an annual water conservation budget. And I wasn't, when I was reading through our first meeting minutes, I kind of made these mental checks of, yeah, we, council's done this, council's done that. So I felt like, geez, we, you know, made some headway. We did what we said we were going to do. Next slide please. And we also created some goals. First goal at the time, again, this was coming off of 2017, was to reduce Brandon's peak day water use for the summer of 2018. Goal number two is to provide Brandon city staff with a means to enforce the lawn watering program. And goal number three was assist Brandon residents through community education or rebate programs. Can't really take credit for goal number one entirely because weather had a lot to do with water usage last summer, but the, I'd say to a certain extent, all three of those goals have been moved forward. And as the Water Conservation Committee has continued to meet regularly and work on initiatives for the community, we've kept first, those first three recommendations in mind and more importantly, these water conservation goals. So even though we created them a little over a year ago, I think they're still very valid and looking into 2020, we can make some improvements, but certainly we feel like we've brought value to the city of Brandon. I won't read through every accomplishment because there are probably some more, but we focus so much over the last year and a half on outdoor lawn watering and outdoor water use, whether it was giving, raffling off the three rain barrels that the art students painted or participating in the Loyalty Day Parade, sending the lawn watering restriction magnets out to our residents just to remind everyone to keep water conservation top of mind and in particular, outdoor water conservation was really, has been a focus of ours for the last almost two years now, including the installation of the Water Smarter sign out by the water treatment plant. Those have been great things. A lot of public education. It's been a lot of fun talking to citizens about the need for water conservation and how easy it is really to follow the odd even water restrictions. So we hope to continue that in the future. The Water Smarter, Water Smarter Incentive Program, the rebate program for our residents or our customers who would like to make some improvements to their outdoor water usage habits, has been, I would say, a success over the first year with limited, limited public information that we've been able to provide. I think 2020 will even, you know, be a bigger year for us, but we have rebated back funds for 39 rain barrels, 11 rain sensors, eight irrigation controllers and seven irrigation timers. So anyone who is considering some improvements to their irrigation system next year, those funds still exist and it's never too early to get a jump on it. And especially the lawn, the irrigation system timer that is fairly complex, not the one in, just the timer inside your garage, but that entire system that senses when your lawn needs to be, when it needs to be watered. If you had one of those or a rain sensor this past summer that would override your irrigation system from going off, you saved some money because with the ample rains that we had, there was not many days where I think people really needed to be running their irrigation systems and yet we continued to see them running in the rain. So something as simple as having a rain sensor would have saved you money, would have saved the city some water. This trend or this first graph, and I've got three of them, summer of 2017, 18 and 19. The first graph, that dark blue line was representative of water, water usage in the summer of 2017. And that red line, the red horizontal line is the 1,600,000 gallon line that is that next level now of water restrictions. And you can see, summer of 2017, we exceeded that a couple of times. Those thin blue lines down on the bottom represent rainfall events. So we, we've graphed through work that Patrick Dearing did for the Water Conservation Committee, we've graphed water usage or water pumpage and rainfall against that red line, which is, again, that's the trigger for additional lawn runner, watering restrictions. Next slide please. So this is 2018 and when I said a couple of minutes ago, we're not taking all the credit for keeping us under 1.6 million gallons last summer. If you look at those thin blue lines again, we had more rainfall in 2018 than we had in 2017. So we would expect to see our residents' water, outdoor water usage during the summer months drop off if you have a rain syst, or irrigation system that is in any sense managed by rainfall. Next slide please. And this represents the summer of 2019, even less than 2018. So much more rainfall, more frequent rainfall than we saw in 2018 or 2017, not even close to the red line. So there's a couple of different ways of looking at this is, wow, that's great, we've, you know, we had a really good summer in terms of water conservation, but what I was really thinking about it is, we can as a community continue to meet our own needs for lifeline services, no matter what the conditions out, outside, whether it's raining or whether it's dry, what I see is, is our ability to manage our water usage. And absolutely, this past summer, the rainfall we received and the weather we had, had a direct impact on that. And yet, as a community, we used less water outside this summer than we have in the last two. So even if 2020 is more dry than the last couple of years, I'm absolutely confident that with continued public education and adherence to the lawn watering restrictions, we can manage through whatever comes our way. But I, I've said it before, is water conservation is a journey, not a destination, that I don't see us ever saying, well, we're done, we're, we don't have to talk about it anymore because, look, we just had a great year and now we don't have to think about 2020. I absolutely believe there's still opportunities and will always be, especially with new residents to Brandon, to continue to talk about the importance of, of water conservation. Next slide please. And what do we hope to accomplish in 2020? So it's not so subtle that we put up pictures of, of showerheads. As I go back to where the, the initial goals and recommendations that came from our committee two years ago, was focused on outdoor water use. And that will always be a focus of ours because there's such a large discrepancy or difference between winter and summer use. But we feel that maybe in 2020 now, we can look towards indoor water uses as well. So for those residents who are interested in water conservation and maybe they're not, they don't do a lot of lawn watering, we've discussed at the, at the, at the committee level, what can we do for residents indoors? And one thing that we're, we would like the council's approval to go ahead and do is use the remaining $860-ish dollars in our budget to purchase water conserving showerheads that would be available at no charge to Brandon water, water customers. It might be the beginning of a water conservation kit that in years, in the future, we could provide. And these are 1.5 gallon per minute showerheads as opposed to, you know, a two and a half gallon minute showerhead. So you could say, depending on your family size and how long you take showers, we think it's an opportunity, not just for people to save water, but also just kind of think about water conservation in the home. Looking towards 2020, we'd also like to look at more indoor opportunities for plumbing rebates, bathrooms, stools, maybe even water conserving washing machines if that's a possibility. We don't have that proposal quite firmed up yet, but I think there's an opportunity or we feel as a committee, there's an opportunity to do that. The, the rebate program exists, we've got the forms. I think adding another checkbox administratively will create some challenges as will, you know, determining what are acceptable brands and models so that, you know, we, we want our citizens to be happy with what they get, but there is, there should be an opportunity for indoor water conservation efforts as well. And absolutely, we want to continue to be involved in the Loyalty Day Parade, the Biz Bash and any other local events where we can talk to the community about the importance of water conservation, maybe hand out some free items and, you know, have a conversation with the community along the way. And if there's opportunities also with, with local businesses that might be interested in supporting water conservation efforts at whatever level, we'd like to keep that door open. And, you know, part of why I'm here tonight is public education and hopefully there's, there's folks watching that maybe hadn't heard about the, the Water Smarter Incentive Program and we'll get them interested in, in being part of the solution. But overall, 2019 was a good year. We got the incentive program off the ground, had a lot of interest in things like rain barrels that, you know, I hope to see more of those around the community. Most importantly though, the, the education of just the value of water and how important it is to conserve it, not just when it's dry, but all year round is something that we'd like to continue to, you know, have the support of the city council on. So unless there's any other questions or any questions of you for Trudy or myself, again, we're, we'd just like the approval to use the remainder, remainder of our water conservation budget for some water conserving showerheads and see how those work out.
As always, my, my timing is impeccable. As always, my timing is impeccable. I bought a showerhead today. And put it in. I'll have to go back and pull the package out of the, out of the garbage to find out if it's a 1.5 or more. So.
It's probably two and a half. I think since the 1990s, that's been the EPA maximum?
I'll check it, just to be sure. I guess I don't have an issue with remaining, going there, so I would make a motion if we need that. We need a motion to?
Yeah, I think, I think.
How about first come, first served or how, I mean?
Yes.
What about new construction?
If they would, if they would choose to use a water conserving showerhead that we have, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't hand those out to any customer, as long as the supplies last, as they say.
I just want to mention that I'm definitely in, in favor of this. I think it's, it's obviously not going to save us the thousands of gallons on the, the lawns like the outdoor does, but the education piece that Kevin has talked about, this is just a great tie-in and as we move forward with discussing tiered rates potentially and how people can save or conserve, this is just another tool that ties in with that as well and helps people do that.
Their age than I was?
Do we have many violations?
But I will say from our standpoint.
Thanks guys, thank you very much.
I will, we'll add that our new bill. The new bill designed to go out with the graph on there, we have had some phone calls on that, so that I think people are looking at it and paying attention to it and I think that'll help in the future as well, when they see their water rate, or water consumption kind of hike up and so they, they're paying attention to it. So, and we did also include a flyer in there about indoor water consumption and use and how to look for leaks in the house, so.
Well, how far does that graph go back?
13 months. Yep.
So regarding the recommendation, a few weeks ago, the mayor appointed a golf committee to just look into, you know, what I would call oversight of the golf course. That committee's met two times, three times, Andrew? Three? And the recommendation coming out of that committee is that we move forward with this RFP process for oversight of the golf course to better educate ourselves about this process and just learn all that we can. And what this committee did on your packet here, we put together this tentative timeline for the RFP process. And I guess I would stress tentative, it's really tentative. We all don't know if these dates will work, but based on our calendar and in the city, this is kind of what we put together. So recommendation is to move forward with the RFP process and then to also let people know that the process that we're going through, if we approve it tonight, will not affect any of the golf prices that we've approved for 2020. And in fact, I went out and bought my pass from Andrew on Friday, so I'm ready to go. So.
Check, just because.
Somebody else is going to come in and manage golf course?
No, I guess I would.
I just want to say thank you because I like the idea that at least we're looking into the different possibilities and maybe it'll get some ideas for our community, what we can do, whether it is somebody else managing it or if we just could maintain, you know, control of it. But I think it's a nice fresh start, so to speak.
Any other questions? I guess I go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and allow the committee to proceed with the RFP process.
Moving on to the work report and then the bid for McCarty Park Fishing Pier. Do we have, Devin, do we want to talk about that?
Yep, it's just a, a bid to the fishing pier wall, the sitting wall there is taking quite a lot of damage over the years from the ice. So we're going to remove the wall and just re-slope the ground to the, you know, away as back so you can still mow it. Excuse me. So we have 20,000 in the budget to do it, so we're under budget. Would have liked to have been a little bit further under, but, but we're still under for now. So I think they can get going on it here in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, pending weather.
So the sidewalk still stays there?
Sidewalk stays. Yep, the wall's going to go, we'll regrade it. And we talked about doing something with some benches or some seating down there. I don't know what we'll do because the ice is still going to come through every spring and wipe, wipe it out. So we've got some ideas that we're thinking of.
I think they're working on this project.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Moving on to public safety, we've got the police report, the fire report, inspections. We have a wage adjustment on page 28.
Motion to approve wage adjustment for Austin, Bryce or Kyle, take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guess if there's some discussion, then pipe up, otherwise I'm going to assume there isn't. Moving on to wage adjustment for Austin Peterson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so here's the big one, squad cars, you know, chief. Come on up. Plead your ca, plead your case.
Okay, as you may or may not be aware, we purchased two Chargers in 2019. The problem is, is that we waited for the South Dakota bid and the Sioux Falls bid and those came in kind of late. So while we've received those vehicles in early October, we've still got to equip them. And that delay in getting those 2019 vehicles out and functioning in the field has basically caused us to put more miles on the existing fleet and that leaves us with vehicle 13 and vehicle 15, which we're purchasing those respective years with 106,000, 145,000 miles. And frankly, the vehicles are wearing out. Those vehicles operate at general speeds of 25 to 35 mile an hour and have a lot of idle time, so that's causing excessive wear as well. So I was budgeted originally 37,500 for one vehicle because it takes about 36 to 37,000 to buy a Ford Explorer or a Tahoe. What I propose is given the high mileage on those two vehicles, that I take basically about $13,000 from my communications equipment budget, put it to vehicles and then buy two more Chargers. I can do that and for a little over 50,000 by two Chargers at about 11,000 to 12,000 dollars less than I can buy an Explorer apiece. So for, budgetarily, it makes sense. I don't want our whole entire fleet, as I said about six months ago, I don't want the entire fleet to be Chargers. We're going to need some sport utility vehicles going forward, so I propose that in the next three years, we buy one Tahoe, preferably a year for the next three years. The problem this year is they're not producing Tahos, they shut down production of police Tahos until October of 2020. So we're about a year away from being able to even procure one and then there's a delivery time of four to five months. So it kind of causes a lot of residual problems. And so by doing this, this, it's about a five month turnaround. So if I ordered the Chargers tomorrow, it'd be about five months till they get here anyway. So again, then we're putting that many more miles on the existing fleet. So I don't, I don't think it's that big of a elephant in the room, but I appreciate you saying so.
And I think the memo you laid out was very thorough. I would make a motion that we, we move forward with this purchase or these purchases.
I would just add to the motion that you're using state bid contract 1734, 17345 utilizing Billion Automotive for the exact same item. State bid contract is with Wagner, but we can utilize another vendor if, as long as it's the exact same. So the police chief would like to use Billion Automotive.
We'll offer them up to staff first, for anybody interested.
Motion to approve 66. One question that I would have is, would these be open to, not that I'm interested in one, but I know one or two retired officers that may be interested if they were available. Would that be stepping on a line, Lisa, do you know, or?
Why are we offering just the guns? Don't we accept a bid amount?
None of them.
Just whoever comes first come?
Unless we get a lot of interest, we can certainly open it up.
There's no regulation that requires you to open it up to employees first. So you could open it up to the public or...
What I would probably do is just open it for individuals unless there's some reason that you want the firearms that were used in the police department opened up to existing or retired police officers first. I don't know enough about weapons to know if that's an issue or not.
My preference would be to keep it either just employees or past employees or open it to public, because I don't want to have to get into background checks and things like that and have one of those weapons out of bid and procure it to somebody that's used. And it wasn't that, like maybe not for...
We'd still have to do a background check on non-lawn course and officers, right?
Retired.
Yeah, no. So you're saying you just want existing or retired Brandon police department, long course and officers, not somebody who worked in public works, for example?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I don't think there's any issue with that.
Okay, so where are we on the motion? Have we got the motion? So, like, do we have that specified?
I committed to a bus, a current or retired long course and Brandon.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions on that? All in favor? And we have vehicles surplus?
Yes, we currently have a 2003 Ford Top bus, that is our original transit bus. 2004 Chevrolet Express van, which has also been utilized as our backup transit van. And 2006 Dodge Caravan, and then two 2014 Ford Explorers. All of these I'd recommend over $500. We will advertise all of them right away except for the transit bus. We're waiting on our new bus, so once we get our new bus, that's when I'll start advertising that and get that a bid date.
The motion is second. Could you surplus the known vehicles? All in favor? All right, moving revolving loan fund bylaws and loan criteria.
So I can speak to this? The Brandon Revolving Loan Fund Board has met, and they're recommending some revisions just to update the bylaws. The loan criteria, in my mind, really doesn't need to be approved tonight. That's just what we use for guidelines when we're doing these loans, but we wanted the council to see what we use as guidelines. So that's just what they are, but the bylaws, we would like to recommend approval to the council. The two biggest changes that I see in this document are, we're going to open up the funds to possibly lend out to more than just people in our industrial park. And then the second change is, we would have the city finance officer be a non-voting member of the board.
Okay, you have a motion?
Sure.
Okay, discussion. Anybody have any questions on that? So Chuck Sear's on that, Tim here on that, right?
Correct.
So, again...
The way I put the finance officer in there, so if you want me to change it, I can, is that the finance officer would attend all the board meetings, but I don't have them as a non-voting board member. So if you want them to actually be a board member without voting rights, then that would have to be written differently.
No, the way you have it's...
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Looking at doing our staff Christmas party on Friday, December 6th. Usual time, Tony's catering. Estimated cost.
Get your reservation into you?
Yes. They'll be plastic unless you bring your own.
Who is a bunch of...
Yes.
I'd love to approve the estimated cost for our...
The CCOC agreement is something that Tammy's been working on with the MPNO. She received some money for the bike plan of $100,000 and the pavement management plan of $150,000, transportation plan, is what it's actually supposed to be called. And then her wages reimbursed for $25,000. So the federal amount that is reimbursable is in this agreement of $225,363.
So we have to accept that, or?
Yes.
Motion to approve. And a motion of second? And the... Free members of CCOC, any questions on that? Anything on that? Let me... So, since we're in streets, I did promise a resident that I would bring up. She is not happy about the sidewalk. She was assessed years ago for sidewalks, and now we're not going to, so she feels that that is unfair. And I really encouraged her to come to the meeting, and she wasn't able to tonight, so maybe she will later, and also to talk to Tim. She's in our ward, and Tim served on the committee. I think he probably has a little bit more information than I do, so I promised her I would do that. Anything else on streets? Okay, moving on to water and sewer, casing pipe invoice.
This is part of the South Dakota 100 Highway. This is for our casing pipe underneath there that they had to raise up when they raised up the street level. So this is our portion paying that.
Motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, should ask for discussion. Assume there isn't anything. Bio solids, final payout.
This is just really cleanup. The amount due on this is zero. So it's just a final payout to get the project closed out, along with the change order to zero out all of the amount.
So if we don't approve, can't do it?
Yeah, the whole $0.
Motion to approve the change order?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, any discussion on that? You guys are pretty quiet tonight. Man, please, yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, any new business to come before the council? Nothing? Okay. We don't need an executive session? Then I would call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done. Thank you.